The agenda would be to consider approval of the minutes from the council meeting of November 10. Those minutes were available for your review as part of the board pack. Do we have any questions or comments on the minutes as presented? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Second by McFerrin. Vote on the minutes, please.
Dubon.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Ware. Kissling.
Aye.
Ferrin.
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent.
Four ayes, one absent. Claims were also available for your review prior to the meeting. Any questions or comments on the claims docket as presented? Hearing none, I would accept the motion to approve the claims.
I'll make that motion.
Bounce?
I'll second one.
Seconded by Dubon. Vote, please.
Dubon.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Ware. Kissling.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Ayes, one absent.
Ayes, one absent. Claims are hereby approved. This time, we're going to consider a task order for the Market Street Park Phase Two. This project is been planned and is looking forward to for an expansion into Market Street. And with us is Brad Coomer and Rachel Steckler, who have been working on this project. And you can give a summary of what we're considering here. Thank you, Rachel and Brad.
Did everybody get a copy of the task order on board pack?
Yes.
Okay. So this is for Phase Two of Market Street Park, which is essentially an expansion of the Far Best Foods Commons area. There is a design included in your packet as well. This came about during construction of Market Street Park. The area is really to honor a former Far Best employee, Jay Houchen. Ted Sager approached us during this project. He, Far Best Foods, Ted Sager personally, and Kerry Houchen all donated money as a part of this project. So the task order is just to basically finalize the design and get construction documents ready.
The document has already been approved by the park board. It's planned to move ahead with this. And the funding is all available through the foundation, through the donations that Rachel mentioned. So it's just a matter of the board giving approval and allowing the project to proceed. And the reason that Brad is here with us is that, of course, Mr. Houchen was Brad's father-in-law, and he has a personal interest in this project and has asked if he could be the project manager for this project. And this will also go to the Board of Works for their approvals since the wastewater department is technically under the works. But I wanted to have the council sign off on as well that Brad would be the project manager for this project as it goes forward. Questions or anything you want me to add?
Denny, if I could, my speaker cut out just a hair when you explained the relationship between Brad and Dave Houchens. Can you repeat that for me, please?
Mr. Houchen was Brad's father-in-law.
Father-in-law, okay.
So he has a personal interest in this project. He's had discussion with Park Director Alstott about this, and he's approved, also sees the merit behind having Brad lead the project for us.
Glenn? I think I saw you with your hand up.
No, I just wanted to comment that appreciate Brad taking this on and appreciate the, I think it's going to be a great attraction for the park. And I think, I think we need to move forward. I assume after this approval, then we'll have to go out and put the project for bid?
We, we're going to try to do most of it in-house. Obviously, we'll bid some of the, some of the stuff out, but what we can do in-house to save money is our, is our plan.
Okay, great. Good job.
What we need is, is action on the task order for approval for the, for the council to approve task order for this project. And it would do forward to the task order number five under the agreement with Taylor Seater Williams to proceed with the planning for the scope and design of the project. I'll need a motion to approve.
I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Motion by McFerrin?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Bounce. Vote, please.
Dubon.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Ware. Kissling.
Aye.
Ferrin.
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent.
Four ayes, one absent. The park Phase Two order is approved. Gentlemen, thank you, Brad and Rachel, and we look forward to, for a good project going forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
Next on the agenda would be to consider approval of the 2021 city calendar. That was also part of your board pack. This is the annual calendar that lists all the meetings and the dates that, transactions that happened with the city, including the dates for claims, et cetera. Master calendar, it has been reviewed by the office manager, by the court treasurer, and all superintendents, and it seems to be in line with what should happen for the year to come. So if you get any questions on the city calendar for 2021 as proposed? Not I'd hear a motion to approve the city calendar as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kissling?
I'll second it.
Seconded by McFerrin. Vote, please.
Dubon.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Ware. Kissling.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
One absent, the city calendar is hereby approved. Also, there is, a document is your, the 2021 city holidays. Again, this, this document was, is for the official holidays for the city employees on the work schedule. Being reviewed by the office manager, the court treasurer, and is their recommendation for these dates. So if there, if there are no questions about the holidays as presented, I would entertain a motion to approve the calendar at the city holidays as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kissling, second. Seconded by Dubon.
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 Dubon. Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Ware. Kissling.
Aye.
McFerrin.
Aye.
Ayes, one absent.
The holiday calendar is officially approved. Next up would be to consider an approval of agreement for the DuBois County Trails Grant. Earlier this year, the city of Jasper, the city of Huntingburg, and DuBois County became aware of a grant opportunity from the Department of Health, Indiana Department of Health, and we jointly applied for that grant. We were successful in that application. It's a $40,000 project, $20,000 coming from local sources. I want to emphasize there were no tax monies spent for the local match, local entities. DuBois County Foundation and several individuals stepped forward to fund this from, from non-tax revenue sources. But under the agreement with, for the grant, the state wants to deal with one entity in managing the grant. So the city of Jasper, under this agreement, would, would be the, the official grantee and would manage the project going forward. And what we have here is an agreement that has been approved by the Board of Works in Jasper and by the county, county council and county commissioners to allow Jasper to be the administrator of the grant going forward. And Phil reviewed this document as well.
Yes, it is an interlocal agreement between Jasper, Huntingburg, and the county for this interlocal bicycle pedestrian master plan project. It is, as the mayor said, completely funded with a grant from the Department of Health, State Department of Health, and also from private funds. However, and, and a contract has already been proposed with VS Engineering for the services. And under that proposal, the available funds should be sufficient to cover their services. However, the interlocal agreement does say if there is a deficiency, and there's not expected to be one, but if there is, then the city of Jasper will contribute 50% toward those deficiencies, the county 25%, and the city of Huntingburg would contribute 25%. So that would be our only financial obligation, should there be a deficiency in the funds to fund this planning project, which is not anticipated.
Now, the importance of this, this grant, this, this project is the fact that it will create a master plan that each of us will have that would put us in a position for funding of grants and programs through, through other state agencies. And as you look at it even from a Huntingburg perspective, the, the projects that we have in our master plan for, for trails and sidewalks, if they are part of this master plan and going forward, we could say that this just isn't a Huntingburg plan, this fits the master plan for the entire county. And we've had great cooperation and meetings with, with all the agencies involved. For your knowledge, although they're not part of the official agreement, the town of Firdan, the town of Holland, the town of Birdseye have all been a part of the discussion and will be included as we create this master plan. But the, the county, city of Huntingburg and the city of Jasper are the, the agencies that sought the grant and were successful in that. So that's where we are. Any questions from the council on the, on the, the grant approval? Again, this, this, you need a council approval, and then we'll go for the Board of Works at their next meeting for final approval and signature. Questions?
How many members are on the board?
On the planning, planning committee?
Yeah, on this, the city and the county and Jasper.
About a dozen people on the planning, on the, on the planning committee for that.
Okay, and we're represented, I assume.
I, I've been on that board as the mayor, Rachel Steckler has been on, Park Director Alstott has been engaged in the conversation, so we're represented across the board.
And speaking to Phil's response on, we would only be responsible for 25% of the difference above what this grant would be? 25% of any deficiency. It's anticipated that the grants, together with private funds, are sufficient to pay VS Engineering's fees. But there is a provision in the contract that says if there is a deficiency, if the funds aren't sufficient, then there would be a 25, 25, 50% contribution. That's the way I understood it. I just want to make sure that was, if it's, only if it's deficient. That's correct. Okay, all right.
The amount of contract with the engineering firm is over the $40,000 that.
I assume they'd have to come back to us before money was spent above and beyond?
That's correct.
Correct.
No, I have nothing further.
Well, we need a motion to recommend to the Board of Public Works entering into the interlocal agreement with Jasper and the county for the DuBois County Trails.
I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, try that again, Denny.
Yeah, we have a, consider a motion, have a, a consider a motion for allowing, recommending to the Board of Works to enter into the agreement for the Trails Grant with Jasper and the city of, and the city of Jasper and DuBois County.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by McFerrin?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kissling. Vote, please.
Dubon.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Ware. Kissling.
Aye.
Ferrin.
Aye.
Next up, we have a set of public hearing date for consideration of sale of city property. Phil, do you want to?
Yes, as you, as you may recall, a couple of meetings ago, you authorized the appraisal of the vacant lot at 14th and Main Street for the purchase by, potential purchase by a developer who wants to develop that lot. That lot, as you recall, also is in the Main Street Economic Development Area. And so it's very desirable that that be developed. The appraisals did come back, and we have those appraisals on hand, and the, the developer has offered, may have signed a written offer to purchase that for the average of the two appraisals, which is $175,000. And before the city can actually enter into that agreement, accept that agreement, the mayor has to recommend that a particular board or committee conduct a public hearing on the, on the, on the advisability of selling city real estate and approving the purchase price. The mayor has indicated that he would prefer to have the council do that, conduct that hearing, and set it for the next council meeting, which would be December 8. That would require publication in the newspaper one time.
So it would be my recommendation to appoint the council to, to conduct the public hearing on the consideration of the sale. Once that public hearing is made, then it is, it's not a done deal at that point. It's a decision whether or not, after public input, the council would still have a consideration of whether or not they'd want to sell the property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So it's not approving the sale, it's just approving having a public hearing to, to comment on the potential sale. It would still then be the council's decision post that to determine whether or not they'd want to enter into the sale agreement or not.
Make a comment?
Yes.
On that corner lot, there's the sign, I believe, for the event center. Has that been an agreement to the owner or the purchaser?
They've been made aware that there is a, I think it's a 35-year lease that still has about 15 years remaining on that, on that, on that lease.
Okay.
They are aware of that.
Okay, good. That's all I have.
Any other questions? So I would, I would need a motion to set December 8 at 5:30 PM as the time and date to conduct a public hearing on the consideration of sale of city property.
Make that motion.
Kissling?
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by McFerrin. Vote, please.
Dubon.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
Ware. Kissling.
Aye.
Ferrin.
Aye.
Ayes.
The motion is carried, and the public hearing will be set on December 8 at 5:30 PM, and we'll be advertising for that public hearing at that time. Thank you. Last item under my agenda would be a discussion on reorganization. You have in your packet, as, as this will be my last meeting, I know that we, we talked about the reorganization plan as proposed a few months ago. And as this is my last meeting, I, I'm not seeking any action from the council at this time, but I am offering a, an option to the council as they go forward. This is an issue, this reorganization is something I've become very much aware of across the state of Indiana. In my meetings with AIM, just a week or so ago, we had a, a panel of mayors discussing reorganization and what is happening across the state of Indiana. And it became very apparent to me that this is not a unique situation for Huntingburg. There are a number of cities looking into these same things, primarily motivated by the fact that 2022 is anticipated to be a challenge for the budget for, for many communities going forward. And, and that is one of the driving forces behind our reorganization. And I know this is an issue that, that is going to have a lot of discussion and, and thorough review by, by our council and our next mayor. But I wanted to offer as a, as a way, as an option, and again, this is not an action for, item for you at all for this evening, but I wanted to present to you, I talked to a crow who has been our financial advisor. They were the team that did the evaluation of the city's finances prior to us going after the stellar designation, who analyzed the situation and said that we had the financial means to, to proceed in stellar. They're the same firm that has done studies for our redevelopment commission and evaluating our TIF areas as well. And in discussion with them over the last week, they have also said, they have received a number of requests for this type of a study, where an outside entity could take a look at what the structures are, like also do some financial work to predict what the, the forecasts for revenues might be in, in the coming years, and I give some advice and suggestion to cities on, on what structuring might look like and what, where efficiencies might be gained going forward. Again, this is a totally an option for the council to consider in the future. The document you have in front of you has a proposal that would study all departments, including the utilities. That's the maximum, not to exceed number that is in the proposal before you. But Angie Stino from Crow, who has worked with us in the past, said that could be scaled to whatever desire the council would have. If it would be to study just the tax-related departments, that could be something that could be determined. If it's just her studying the, the two departments that we have been considering, that could be a part of the proposal as well. But I wanted to present to you this, this document that gives you and our, our new mayor the option of, of taking an independent look at this if you so desire. And since that is one of the things that's still out on the table as I leave this office, I just felt it was my duty to at least present an option for the council to consider as they move forward. So again, no, no action is going to be required. I just wanted to make that available to the council should they so desire and want to move forward with that in the future. If, if any comments or questions, I'd be glad to entertain those.
This will be for, this will be for all departments up to, this proposal is showing for all departments?
Yes.
This particular one?
Yes, this, the proposal you have would be all departments and the utilities included. You can scale it to whatever scope you would want. One thing I didn't mention, wanted to mention, I forgot to mention was that in, in my discussions with other mayors and, and the situation across the state, the funds that we received from, from Cares for COVID expenses, this would be a qualifying expense for, for, for Cares money, as it is directly related to declining revenues in the coming years or, as it relates to, to, to forward. So this would be a fundable event underneath the Cares program that we have. As you recall, we received about $198,000 from the state. We have committed around $100,000 at this point, I think Tom is where we got committed. So there are funds that should the council want to look, look at this, this would be a fundable event through the Cares money that is in our account now. And totally your call in the future.
I have, I have recently read and heard that the, they want communities to spend this Cares money or return it.
Right.
And I think that we should, I'm not saying that we should move forward on this at all tonight, I'm just saying we should look into this possibility at a future meeting, because if it falls under that act, then this may be an appropriate use of those funds, and we want to get the use out of the funds instead of them sitting idle and not actually helping the city.
Mayor, if we, if we were to cut this back to just do the scope of the park and street merger, would it cost be deducted?
Yes, it would be a reduction in costs. They, they went that, to the high end. I spoke with Miss Stino today, and she said, in future discussion, if, if with you and the, and the, and the mayor, they could scope this project to whatever area that, that the council feels necessary. But she went to the high end of what the, the total package would be for all departments. I could, I think you can see some action out of how that would happen. And certainly, if it's reduced to either just the tax departments or just the two departments that are, are under consideration now, there would be a reduction in that cost.
Okay. Thank you for throwing that out, proposal.
Were there, were there not mentioned, in there several, several interesting points of maybe looking at our, our internal assessment of payment in lieu of taxes for certain departments?
Yeah, that would be another item that, that they would take a look at, is what is the, the status of those, the relationships between the utility and the city, and what would be, you know, the, the payment in lieu of taxes, revenue or amounts, if they were, you know, confident that they're fairly accurate, but this would give it a, another review of those as well.
Okay.
It would, it would give us confirmation that we're using the correct formulas anyway, if nothing else. And I'd like to make sure that we're not undercharging or overcharging our utilities for sure.
That, that I want to give to you and, and to our next mayor to consider at a future time, and I appreciate the diligence that the council is going to go in making this decision. It's important for our city to be fiscally strong and make good decisions. I trust the council will make good decisions with, with or without this study, but I felt it was my responsibility to offer at least one more opportunity to, to help resolve this issue with, with some, some good, hard data and allow the decision to be a fiscally strong one as well as, as a good one for, of, of the services and the types of work that our city does with it. Thank you for your allowing me to consider this and present this to you this evening. No further questions on that. It's time for our reports, and I believe Energy Superintendent John Rudepauler is online. I heard the train. John's at his office, and usually you hear the train go by when John's there. So Mr. Rudepauler, do you have a report, please?
Yes. As usual, there's a train coming, so try to bear with me. On the gas department, we installed six new services this month, four of them being in Hunter's Crossing. Hunter's Crossing 2 is pretty well full. I'd say they'll be starting in Hunter's Crossing 3 very shortly. And the crew's been working on repairing some small leaks at the meter sets detected during our annual leak survey. We should be about finishing them up. Then they've been working on their regular maintenance items on our system, checking all areas for signage and marker posts that are still in place. Any structure we have above ground, we got to have identification on the fence or on the hardware that's sticking up out of the ground. Just, it's a regulation we have to go by, so we've been out checking all that. Over time, they get misplaced, worn, so we've updated all that stuff. And that's pretty well edited for the gas department. Anybody have any questions?
Questions for the gas report?
No, sir. No.
On the electric side, again, we installed four services at Hunter's Crossing 3, or I'm sorry, 2. Now, we're getting ready to start in 3. And then they set three new poles on South Cherry that's pretty well 40, 50 years old. So we got them all set. I think the first week of November, the crews, they worked on 4th Street on the Christmas decorations. I'd like to thank Rachel for the stuff she purchased. I think it looks really nice, the decorations we got on the 4th Street. That worked out real good. And then the crews, they have some, I got a call from the FAA, they're getting some arcing noise in their air-ground radios. They pinpointed the four or five poles we had out there. Our crews went out, our crews went out and checked, found some loose hardware, some old hardware, so we kind of tightened everything up on the poles. The pole's been there over 20 years. Over time, stuff kind of gets loose, some of the nuts and hardware. So we tightened all that up, we replaced some of the hardware on the poles. So we think we have that corrected. FAA is going to call back next week and let us know. And the crew's been doing some maintenance on some of the small vehicles, the engines, the little Honda engines, we've been going through them, get them ready for the winter. So they've been kind of working on that. And for the electric department, we received notice Friday that we did receive the grant, the $9,000 grant for the electric charging station, which hopefully we can get that worked in in 2021. Well, we did receive word, we did get it. So we'll be working hopefully with the park department at Market Street on getting that area ready. And that's, any questions on the electric?
Electric superintendent.
John, on the airport situation, would that be a possible underground project at a future date?
Not that area right there. I think we got underground all around it, but I would say that's going to probably stay above ground in that little area there.
Okay, I just, I just wondered because it seems like it's a, that'll, that may come back again at some point if we have, you know, poles out there with connectors and things out in the open.
Yeah, we, we looked the poles over real good, tightened everything up, and actually it's been several, several years since we've tightened everything up on them poles, so hopefully it'd be good for quite a long time now.
Okay, that, that's fine. It was just a random question.
John, Jeff Bounce here. Hey, the electric charging station, in light of what we just discussed with the Phase Two of Market Street Park, where do you envision the charging station being? And, and i- if so, is it something that is being worked on along with the plans that Rachel and Brad are working on now?
The plan is close to the.
discussed with the phase two of Market Street Park, where do you envision the charging station being? And, um, and i- if so, is it something that is being worked on along with the plans that Rachel and Brad are working on now?
The plan is, uh, close to the Walden House out by the highway. Hopefully it'll be, can be a small little parking lot there where the charging station can be installed.
Yeah, it's dropped me out of the meeting. So you cannot restart your video.
We can hear you.
Do what?
We can still hear you though.
Okay, you can hear me? Okay, they say you can hear me. That's fine. No problem. Thank you.
I think Rachel and, and Brad are on as well. I saw them come back on. You might run a response to that, that same question. Rachel and Brad?
Yes, we will be working with John. We haven't had a discussion yet, but the plan is to integrate the charging stations in with phase two of Market Street Park.
Okay. That way, is that, are you adding like six parking spaces, Brad?
Yeah, six or seven.
Whatever the space allows.
Yes, correct.
That'd be great.
Any questions on the electric?
That's all for me.
Nothing here.
Nothing.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Water superintendent Gary Marholz.
Uh, how's everybody this evening?
Great.
And we're on the filter plant, we're starting to have quite a bit of problems with our dosage pumps, but within two weeks of starting new systems up, so it looks like we'll be able to make it through for that. Um, and with the cooler weather, we are starting to notice a little bit of slowdown in our demand. So about every other weekend, we're not having to run the plant in order to keep up. We had a couple of small leaks on service lines, one on Argem and then one on First Avenue. Both of those were very, very small leaks. And in the Main Street project, somewhere or another, there was a, the tie-in at Main and Third was missed. So rather than write a change order, I have made a decision that our crew would tie that in and they have tied that in. Um, and we're waiting on one more back two tests before we can put that in circulation. I ordered the two hundred and fifty meters that we approved last month and the delivery date on them will be the ninth of December and we will start installing them as the weather permits. Um, and then for the filter plant, everything is coming together. I know what I've got listed there, but there's so much more coming together that both of my OX machines are up and running. We, so we're manufacturing our own disinfectant at this point. Um, and then we're planning on doing the startup on a new wet well on the thirtieth of November. And the Tuesday following that, we will demo out the old, um, wet well and we will be running on our new system. So, um, they're actually going to start the new side up in Jan-, on January eleventh. So we'll be running on that side. We're thinking we'll need to run that side for about three or four days before we shut down the old side and they can start rebuilding the distribution system. All the main has been laid and I think they have five customers to transfer over and then they'll start going down the road and killing the old main. And they started restoration and I think about seventy-five percent of the sidewalks has been replaced. Um, there's still, there's still the jack and board that needs to be completed on Fourteenth and Main. And there's a crossing at Second Street where we found the pipe was in extremely bad shape that they're going to replace. Uh, Silential has been on site and laying out the pillars for the foundations for the structures that will hold the solar panels. Um, they're saying that tiers will be installed within three weeks. Substantial completion for the, uh, solar field will be February sixth with final completion on March eighth. So that's my report. Um, anybody have any questions?
Questions about the water report?
Is, if the solar field is, uh, final completion is March eighth, what is the expected final completion of the plant?
Uh, March twenty-eighth. And then they'll have the, we'll have the punch list after that, but we should be up and running by the twenty-eighth of March.
Okay, March thirtieth, you said?
March twenty-eighth.
March twenty-eighth, okay.
That was the last sketch we, we received.
Sounds good. Just was wondering, I know they have to do the other side yet.
Yeah.
For the questions for the water superintendent?
Nope.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Attorney Scotty, you got it for the board this evening?
Uh, the only thing I have is just to acknowledge you publicly, Danny, for your leadership in the community and the growth you've managed to achieve in this community, the quality of life that you've achieved. It's been, it's been a pleasure to watch it and it's been an honor for me to be a part of your administration as your city attorney. And I thank you for that opportunity. I congratulate you on, on a fantastic job as mayor of the city in the past five years.
Times flies when you're enjoying yourself. Times flies when you're having a good time.
But, but sincerely, from my heart, thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Phil. I appreciate your continued service to the city of Huntingburg, to many mayors as, as along the way. And I know that you will continue to offer the same sound advice and counsel to Mayor Swinghammer as he comes into the office as well. So thank you for your support in all this as well. Phil, appreciate it so much. Mr. Dipple?
No, but other than to congratulate you and, and also thank you for your time, service. Enjoyed working with you.
Been a good partnership, Tom. And then we've had many meetings over the last nine years and, and it's always been a very, conducting the business of the city of Huntingburg is something I've enjoyed doing alongside you. And we've, we've had a great partnership on that. And I, I thank you for your, your contributions as well. And you, you've served the Huntingburg, uh, uh, longer than, than most of us. And I, I know you will continue to do so with a great manner. So thank you, Tom. Any items from the council this evening?
I have a few words I'd like to say, um, to Denny, to Mayor Spinner. You know, I remember one time asking you the question of what do you, this was after another mayor left a neighboring town. And I said, what do you call a mayor after he's not mayor anymore? And Denny said, well, you still call him mayor. And I guess that's true when it's a president or a vice president. And I just thought the rest of the council might like to know how we're supposed to address you down the road when you come back to town. But I just want to say that as a councilman, uh, you know, I remember five years ago coming onto this council and, and being genuinely excited about the direction of the city. And I remain excited about it yet today. And I know that a good leader coach is always going to pass the, the credit to other people. And Denny, you've always done that, but I know the value of leadership as well. And you've certainly led the city in a great direction. And I'm excited to, um, I'm excited to be part of that, the, the last five years. And I'm excited about the legacy that you've left behind and what the next five and many more beyond that might hold. So thank you for your service and, and, and best of luck in your new, in your new career.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it.
I'd also like to say a few comments on behalf of myself and, um, hopefully Glenn as well. Uh, Denny, uh, we started this journey together about nine years ago and, um, I, I'm quite excited for your future. Um, you've done an excellent job working with the councils, working with me personally. And, um, I just think, uh, this is more of just a change of season. And I hope to continue to be, you know, hearing from you, you know, at your new position in Oprah. So, um, I just want to put it out there that you've done a fantabulous job with everything, um, that I've been involved in. And the city is better for it and I am better for it. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
No, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Jose, do you want to make a comment?
It's a, I would like to say that thanks to Mayor Spinner to, uh, for the hard work, the passion work for the city. I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And also, uh, thanks for work with, uh, for our, our community, our Latino community. And I hope, uh, the new mayor will be continuing to work with, uh, with the Latino community also.
With that, I got one last thing. I can't hardly top everything they've just said, Mayor. You've done an excellent job for our city. I remember back when you and myself and Steve met before we ran the first time, we had meetings at your residence. And I remember one of the first things you brought up was where can we put a railroad overpass? And you grabbed that bull by the horns your first day of office. And I know it's maybe not pleased a lot of people don't thinking it's the right location, but I think it's the only place it would work. And I give you credit for that project right there wholly, along with all the other projects you've done. It's been an honor to serve with you and, and the rest of the council and, and my tenure here was same was with Steve. But if there's no other comments, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Hold on just a minute. We do have one other item on the agenda. I'll, I'll get back to that on motion, Mr. Councilman Kissling. I do want to, I have a, I think we want to have an opportunity. I think Mayor Elect Swinghammer has, has joined us on the phone as well. And he will be, uh, uh, taking the, the oath of office tomorrow morning in Old Town Hall. And I just wanted to have, uh, our mayor-elect have an opportunity to be a part of this, this, uh, meeting and to, uh, share his words with the council at this time. So, uh, Mr. Swinghammer, if you're with us, then, uh, we welcome your comments.
Oh, thanks, Danny. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. First, first of all, I want to, uh, to thank Denny for spending as much time with me as he could, uh, these last few days. Uh, it, it's not usual. I understand that, uh, the, the former mayor spent so much time with the, with the new coming in mayor to, to kind of help him indoctrinate a little bit into the thing. Yeah, Denny's shoes are going to be hard to fill. I mean, looking at everything that he's accomplished over the years, uh, it, it, it gives me the challenge that I, I desire to do, to do better. Uh, I look forward to working with all of you. And I know together, uh, we can still make this place even better maybe than what it already is. So thank you for that. And like I said, I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, Steve. And I, I want to offer just my, uh, uh, confidence in, in the leadership that's coming our way with, with, uh, with Steve Swinghammer. He's got a passion for our community and he's going to do, uh, a great things for our leadership. And I know he, he will do well because I want to say thank you to each and every council member, not only those here tonight, but any council member who served during, during my time. Uh, tough decisions were made all along the way. And I felt like every time I needed the backing of the council, it was there. Uh, they stood behind us. They believed in the projects that were going forward. They offered support. They offered, uh, uh, just advice and they worked hand in hand with, with my office, with Tom, with our incredible staff that we have here at the city of Huntingburg. And the accomplishments that we, we've talked about, uh, you know, I, I am so honored to have been the mayor of Huntingburg. But, um, and I stand on the shoulders of everyone here in accepting the position that I go forward to, to accept. So I want to thank each and every one of these council members, all the other elected officials that served, almost and served on boards and commissions, who, uh, when I called them, I think about the stellar committee, called people in twenty fourteen and said, would you serve on a committee? Little did they know, they would be serving on committees for six years as a volunteer. And everyone showed up at all times. So the accomplishments here are great and, uh, but it's done by a great team. And I'm honored to have been, uh, your leader for the last nine years. And I'm very honored to, uh, to live in a city like no other.
With that, uh, I didn't, I was unaware that Mayor Lex was on. Congratulations to your new position tomorrow. Uh, sorry, I will not be able to attend that ceremony, but I know I'm looking forward to serving with you.
Do we have a motion?
I, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Kissling to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by McFerrin. We have a roll call, please.
Yvonne?
Aye.
Bounce?
Aye.
Ferrer, Kissling?
Aye.
Ferrin?
Aye.
Price, one absent.
Four ayes, one absent. We have a, a affirmation vote and we are adjourned. Thank you.